We call the August seventh. State Councilor, please rise and come to the side.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One day.
Call call please.
Councilmember Byerly.
Here.
Councilmember Conklin.
Here.
Councilmember Missouri.
Here.
Councilmember Stevenson. Councilmember Breaker.
Here.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Here. Agreeable minutes of the July twenty fourth regular meeting. Motion for an exception. Any questions? They're coming. Off of the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes. Public comments request comments from residents, city councilor. Comments from the board of the Lockton City Authority. There are some comments that I have behalf of the authority. You're going to stop and land in the car. Head of time the director of the authority. If you can read into the twenty twenty two three members of city council attended a meeting of the authority. Created a new joint authority to eliminate PUC jurisdiction over the city with respect to state water rates. Two details were provided other than Castaneda Youngman House for big contact, big government interest. There's no further communication till the authority members. He has other dated July eleven on twenty twenty three stating that city council scheduled the first reading on July twenty fourth to dissolve the authority. The authority has to question why there's been no interaction during the meeting here, which would have set the authority from being in the pair. Now we're in the process of re-superdising contracts of public bodies. Specifically since beginning of twenty twenty three, the authority has converged to the subcommittee of county recreation to establish a dedicated trail to the pond, just to water. The Commonwealth Bureau of Forests freely contacting two of the county on the state board. And for justice that the authority consider an inherent peer study on it, pretty added thought. For both properties. State contractor was willing to perform this D C N R that has indicated that was a funding plan. The authority was at the point of receiving its total working cost and preparing a D C N R application, one of the five of them. Which time the contractor D C N R and the Bureau of Forests, she were notified of the authority's inability to study the application for funding. As a result of that notification, D C N R has a peer study is off table. Bureau of Forests, we have indicated that they may have to further delay their contract to order. If their study is dependent on a current study by the authority. Whether they could lose potential funding is unknown. They need to know who they will be dealing with and who will be signing, waiting for the creation of new authority will further delay their project. If they lay too long their contract, may not be able to study under this kind of timeframe due to his work. Is there a reason the authority was kept in the dark? Then my question is why there's a rush to dissolve the authority based on perfect form compared by the city? There has been no decision on which way the system will be going in the future. Would be possible that when all random cases, three options are considered as the best, what would be the best option? It seems that the driving forces appear to be use the application costing three hundred thousand dollars each. Would be necessary every year for changes which may or may not be connected. Other questions related to a joint authority or will current authority members be appointed to provide the state's family? Will a lot of assets being transferred to the city on dissolution of the city authority be transferred to the joint authority, including cash? Will the system be transferred to the joint authority and no cost? Who will operate the system? Who will separate? Who will follow up with the damage, who will pilot, who will be setting during contacts, you know, financing? And no applications for funding. The authority has financial commitments under sustainable management plan. If the water system is involved through a private entity, what happens to the sales? Will the suburban water authority be reimbursed for its possession of their product? They will comply with considering the need to immediately invest thirty million dollars to improve it. And if the system does not include water treatment plant. The sentence revised dissolution ordinance includes the sources, which is that mean insurance during the sale.
Well, um, we had a committee that worked on this. I think they're about on position to address the question. I mean, brought recommendation to Capitol. Now we're on that, right?
Yeah.
And I will, Rick and Richard, right? What do you want to address?
I'm happy to. None of the, none of these questions have been answered at this point in time. There's, you know, our thoughts are that we would continue to operate exactly as we have, as we operate now. There would be very little change except in who would be actually doing the operation. And that, no decisions have been made, no formal. We can't do anything with the joint municipal authority with the other entities. It's almost this authority is still in place. That's my understanding. And that's where we are is attempting to negotiate with Castaneda and Wayne Hatch.
I have a question to ask. So Barbara. The first reading tonight, again, the first reading is to dissolve the authorities, this authority. And so then we've committed to reach our second reading. And then there's a, a, um, a letter that we're supposed to agree to and sign it passive in as a fourth. And then that's dissolved. So there's no way we can continue to operate as we are currently doing if in fact you start the process tonight with the first reading. And then have the second reading and then wait for us to send the letter that we asked, we agreed to dissolve it. And we sign it.
I'm not clear. I don't know all of the processing. And I understand that part of this has to go to other organizations beyond us for approval.
I think council member Missouri was stating that operations would continue and it is the city that actually operates the water system. And so the city is operating the water system. We would continue to operate.
The way she said it would continue as it is, meaning the way we are today.
Oh, I apologize. That's what you did mean or didn't. I, no, I mean that the water system will continue to operate. People will still get their water. There's not going to be any change.
That comes from the city water. That comes from the central Quinton County Water Filtration Authority. It doesn't come from the Lockton City Authority. So yeah.
Everybody, there's no, there's no threat that the water system is going to stop operating.
True, to suburban or to Lockton. And if two of the municipalities.
But there's still a lot of questions to be answered. You're, you know, kind of putting me on this. I'm, I'm being put on the spot for questions that haven't really been answered yet. We're still trying to get the logistics work done. McLean has to be Castaneda. Those, those things have all been answered, but I don't think anybody intends.
But I, I guess I'm just under the misconception that what perhaps the review when you discussed it and came back to counsel with the recommendation that you should dissolve this body, our body. I was thinking if I come up with a list of answers to some of these potential questions or some potential questions tonight that need to answer from us.
Well, I appreciate that and what a great idea, but unfortunately I had no knowledge of any, but this, first I'm seeing this or hearing the questions I, Karen and I.
From Richard, yes.
Karen and I spoke briefly. She asked me to take the ride out and have a look at something. I spend a lot of time in the watershed myself, hiking and running, going around the trails. So I did do that. And I would see no reason to expect why the property would be maintained any differently and that contracts wouldn't be honored as they are being done now. There's no reason to think that anything, nobody's intention is to do anything.
If you go to the survey that you issued, it seems like you got two alternatives. I don't think are the only potential alternatives, but that's personal and then I'll give them. It seems like there's a rush to do something to eliminate this authority when there's no decision been made. I wish for your going in on even call it. So why do you need to dissolve this authority now rather than to get the asset that the city's name? Which seems like a money grab.
That wasn't anybody's intention. We're, like I said, we're negotiating currently with Castaneda and Wayne Hatch, working with them, trying to form a joint municipal authority for the benefit of everybody involved.
So I think your bigger business are, are what they. The longer you delay those projects for the cost, the longer you're talking about, you know, the amount of money that could be there for escalation if you can get them. If you're going to have a joint authority, it's going to take time to create that. And if you can't have those projects proceed while you're creating that, you're putting those projects.
I don't know that we know that we can't have those projects proceed while we're creating them. Nobody's ever said we couldn't.
Somebody's got to have contracts.
Well, we have contracts and those, why couldn't those contracts be transferred?
I don't know. That's one of the questions. Will this is the refill? Will all of the damn group projects respect any of their contracts?
But right now the city does those things. Um, and if there were a joint municipal authority, it would be the obligation of the joint municipal authority, all of those things. Because those projects are secured. So right now the city collects the user fees and that's what compensates for the debt service that has to be paid. If the joint municipal authority were formed, it would collect the user fee and it would pay the debt service.
I understand all of that. My question is still. Is the city committed to going ahead with the design of the Keller project? Or will that be something that's given to the joint authority or private?
I expressed to you and also to Mark one, the city engineer, that that is infeasible at this time, according to the legal council from Penba. Because the timing influences our ability to be reimbursed. And so when we last met with Penba's last year, they wanted that way to, I spoke to Alfred Siemens about that. And that is still the position that it's still too soon to completion of when we could get Penba's reimbursement. That it's too far out to do the planning element of the other projects.
Let me get into this question I want to. A great survey identifies forty two million dollars in improvements to the dam that additions were currently unavailable. Greatest part of the cost of the Keller dam that project after seeing the final design completed. Once the design is completed, the project has to be submitted for review by D E P. Terminating applications submitted, bidding documents repaired, funding applications repaired for that work and any remaining. The D E P review process and permitting process. And sooner the project design can be started, the more likely the project is to be bidding within a reasonable timeframe and more likely the city will be able to expand. Project campus scene, build a new authority in place, that could be later project. Creating a new authority of state view, implementing the authority of pay time. In that equation of the construction cost due to delay of three to five percent of amount of six hundred thousand, two million dollars a year. The city authority recognized the advantage of an early start for the Keller design and after that last meeting offered quite partial funding for that design work. So the project could proceed immediately without the need for additional borrowing and the attendant closing costs and interest. The offer became moot with the disclosure of the attendance of all the authorities. Again, one of your decisions has to consider the overall scope of the dam privates. Getting the design underway has nothing to do with Penns. Just get that process started so that you can get reviewed on by D E P. Just because it's a new year process with the whole project. And then when it's time to get ready for Penn best and funding applications, you have everything ready to go. If you put out the start of the process, it wasn't the whole thing off, it's like where your life will be paying a lot more for the project. And that may well offset the cost of any P U C application. I know you have suggested the three hundred thousand dollars for application to file with the P U C. Those are the involvement of an attorney. I can't say that it won't cost three hundred thousand dollars, but I can see that the cost of the three filing in twenty ten. Making into a contemplation since that time, an order of magnitude less than. And there were no attorneys involved. I know you know. That is waiting for you, three or four year period. So I think there's another way to look at things. Bring up definitely at a meeting and start up.
Speaking on Keller, I received an email the other day from the city engineer that in May of last year, they had committed a request for the E P review on what they wanted to design for Keller and not yet received. So I think it would be premature to begin designing something that you don't know D E P has approved this I know. Because he asked me to email the head of the M T P, who is familiar with our area. He came here, I believe it was in twenty twenty or twenty nineteen for a tour. And he's now the head of D M safety. I did email him to ask for an update on the timing of that, but I didn't hear.
Does anybody have any answer to any of the questions? Before.
I do not.
Thank you.
With respect to the name improvement projects, the city is in charge of those now and again. If the joint municipal authority were going, going forward, then they would be in charge of those projects. And the sewer system is in entirety already operated by this community Lockton. So that will be continued sewer operation the way we currently operate. We're the ones who treat sewer for multiple municipalities all the way up to Lockton Township in Senate County and will continue to do so. Those agreements are in place and still have decades left.
Are you considering the sale of it? And that would impact all those municipalities.
Council has asked to have an appraisal done, but that doesn't mean the council has said they're selling any system outright. Council has not made any decision like that. Council would personally within its rights to know what the fair market value of its asset. And that's what council has requested that be put on there.
This can perhaps equal water. It's through itself. Um, I was wondering if council is aware that the city provided to the central Quinton County Water Filtration Authority, the water free charged to, that is put through the processing and then divided up and sent to suburban, not Haven. Are you aware that that does not, there's no charge from the city to the filtration authority for the water coming from the dam? So everyone is aware, yes, it's free. Yeah.
That's another issue.
So, so then I was, but so what would happen if the city did charge the water filtration authority?
What happened if the city charged the water filtration authority?
For the raw water.
There'd be no effect on the city because you'd be building yourself and reimbursing yourself.
That's right. And every river would pay for that. Say water coming out of the filtration authority, just like they do. So it's redundant to do that. And why would you do that from a distance standpoint?
This is your survey. I have some comments on your survey too. I wasn't telling you anything, but since we come up, I will. Surveys are a great idea, but there's semantics in this thing that are misleading. The survey mentioned the need for thirty one million dollars in capital improvements. It doesn't mention that the majority of those costs can be shared by the urban water authority to the extent of between forty five and fifty percent. In discussion, the option of a joint authority continually mentioned that the city will still need to raise rates every year for at least ten years. At this point, no one can say how rates can be affected by that off. Two joint authorities created, the authority not the city would separate and determine frequency of increase. The incorporating municipalities would have no direct control over the authority. The authority needs to mark art of funds that might have to establish rate prior to moving that third for the city. Survey implies that the water filtration plan built in nineteen ninety five needs major cost to repair. The secretary of the central Penn County Water Filtration Authority, who has constructed homes and operates that plan. I can assure you that all the plants thirty years old, hardly anything in the plants thirty years old, have been given some replacement upgraded on a continual basis. There are two projects yet to be completed, coding of two storage banks to which funding is currently being pursued. And replacement of plate sellers to which funds are being set aside in reserve funds to adjust the cost of minimal borrowing when the project is undertaken. Also, as a clarification, the C C C W F A is the joint municipal authority. Survey resurrect, study resurrect the idea of the state charging for water from the watershed, an idea which previously picked up. Condition of the formation of the central Penn County Water Filtration Authority, whether there will be no charge for water delivered to the treatment plant. Since the city would select the charge and then be billed for its air based on consumption, there'd be no impact on city finances. But it would impose an additional cost on suburban. The questions involving the actual project that which entity could complete the project for the least amount of money. The cost of the project will be the same or inspector of the entity doing the work, all being meeting. The city initiative D has to adjust whether the hot planning rate increase under the P U C. Ways of potential offset relation due to the latest construction caused by carrying the typical. So survey to a product is discussion of that charge for down the gallons and it would be, and it basically attack on. And that was discussed previously and council made the decision in nineteen ninety three. Because it was a condition of creating that authority.
I will clarify that the ability of the city to charge the filtration authority for water is in the approved agreement and has been in every agreement amendment um, since it was originally started.
I mean, it'd be a good portage.
So the city authority. Your attorney said.
Senator.
Sorry. I guess, I guess. The fact that I guess it's too. Pursue that avenue would kind of lead to the move that she can't.
In all fairness, that's thirty years. That's nothing to do with this. I mean, you're talking about council thirty years ago making that commitment.
If you weren't here when some decision made or some range, then I think it's not. It must thirty years ago that the only way you can think that if they go.
Okay. Well, that's fair enough, but I, I think that when we're talking about maybe go into a long litany of things that have happened over the course of the last thirty years, we have to look at the future. And how we're going to afford some of these things and deal with some of the issues that we're confronted with now and in the next fifteen years. But you clearly have stated very eloquently in your package here.
The city, the cost that the city incurred actually wasn't the city or the city authority at the time. We constructed and was sun caught by nineteen ninety three goes, bond issues were all paid off. So there were no additional costs to the city supplying water through the filtration authority. And that's, that was understood by council at the time. Zoom was there, zoom was not a council. Decision that was not necessarily favored by everybody, but it didn't really end it. Do you wanted to have participation in the construct plan and ended up by the authority that not only those plans, but spend something like eighteen million dollars and put a lot of system improvements in both in the city and suburban. So costs were shared by the two system. And from that point forward, it agreed at all costs of maintaining the watershed would be shared and the joint operations would be shared. Such as intended in further favor. And if there is documentation, that's the question.
Yes. Can you state your name, please?
Eric James. I do apologize to complain. I didn't realize it is this only one. That's. We got the reset.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're here right now to talk about the water system.
Okay.
Um, we'll get in the, be in the meeting after the reset.
Will there be a public?
Yes, there will be a settlement.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that's what we decided. It's probably. I suggest we'll be deciding during the regular part of the meeting, so probably the appropriate way for that.
There has been the discussion perhaps of selling the water system to a private industry, other industry. And again, they're not being held to the fact that a previous council made a decision. As you folks have made decisions in the last few years. You don't want some other council coming along and inserting you and destroying all decisions that you have made for the welfare of the community. So there's nothing beholding a future owner of the water system from just arbitrarily saying we're going to sell. We would like to buy the water from the city or they would like the city to sell it to them. So that they, they feel that that's more equitable to them as a private enterprise that they want. The city to sell waters instead of giving it away and those things every now and then, because uh, those things every now and then bother me. Cause I was in opposition to giving the water away. Um, but again, reason prevailed and it was unanimous when we finally voted. But it was a long drawn out process of, of how we would do that. It just didn't happen overnight. We had, the blackboard was full of figures about the ratio between suburban and the ratio of the city's assets. Whether one was, one was better than the other and the whole. Whether one was, one was better than the other and the whole. And so consequently, we decided to go into this adventure as a joint and not as a one enterprise. Because they're not equal. The suburban water authorities assets and the cities are entirely different as far as monetary costs. You put them down on paper, I mean, but in the end, what was equal. We decided that both companies, suburban and the city, would start out with free water. And when they were billed in by the Clinton, Central Clinton County Water Filtration Authority, they would be starting at zero. No costs associated with the water coming from the authority, except what was, they were both being shared equally. And anyway, it worked. And we've been some times where there've been some consternation about them. Since I sit in this Central Clinton County Water Filtration Authority as well, I was asked to replace Dan Stukel when he passed away. So that you can gauge my current one there based on what you've had. There's been some comments every now and then from us as well as them, you know, I'm speaking of uh, the city and suburban and whether or not this cost associated with something we might have fixed that might be as little as a fan, whether or not we're even sharing that properly. I mean, there's, you can go, I don't know. I tell you that every time there's a cost associated with leaving, it is shared equally. And so it described it out with both, both the city and suburban paying nothing for the water, but it's on equal footing right away. And then how suburban would increase their cost. And having to file for rate, they don't file for rate increases. They just raise rates when it's necessary. They don't have to go to PUC and justify why they want to raise the rates. They don't have to go to their constituents, the water users, their uh, the water tax people. They don't have to explain to them why they want to raise the rate. Although they do in the paper, but they can just arbitrarily do that. And that was the one good thing about the city. You have to explain why you want to raise the rates. PPL went through the roof and do you see back from now? And we've all benefited that PUC decision. They had a pullback on what they were charging us. And that's one good thing about the PUC. It may cost a lot to file with them, but they have the interest of the general public in, at heart. They want to make sure you're being charged correctly and that it's fair. And that the city or whomever is the builder is not arbitrarily putting money in their pocket. So I just think the PUC is the way to go and to circumvent that by creating a joint authority. And that's what this is to circumvent fact that you would have to go to PUC. I think that's wrong. And it shows that you don't lack the integrity or the guts to stand up to the general public when they march in here and say to you, why are you increasing my wire rate? Why? Well, it's not our decision. It's going to be from this joint authority that we created, so we don't have to deal with this. And that's what you're going to hear, believe me, if people listen to what's happening now, they're going to know you didn't care. You went around, circumvented it, came up with this, avoid the idea to circumvent the PUC. And believe me, the PUC will know as well. When you start putting a rate increase in every year, they're going to see what you're doing. And anticipate it. Or when your authority is putting a rate increase every year, council will keep their hands clean. So anyway, I said, I said, I don't think it means that, okay.
Well, that was for home views.
Okay.
Uh, the PUC does not regulate authorities, partly, it's the and it does not regulate municipalities. Except in circumstances where a municipality has customers outside its geographical board. Which is the case of lock a one of its customers or way of that link. But the PUC's authority is limited in monitoring the way rates that are paid by municipality to its customers outside that municipality. Because its objective is to ensure that there is not a differential in rates between the two that the company. So you go to the PUC, it costs, however much it costs, we don't have to cost, but it's not fee. You go to the PUC, which means you sit in front of an administrative law judge with your attorney and your witnesses. And he makes a determination and that determination goes to the PUC and the PUC rules on it. There is only one determination that can be made when you have a municipality that charges the same amount of money inside its borders and outside. The PUC does not regulate what happens inside the municipality. So if the rates are the same inside and outside, the administrative law judge and the PUC have no option but to approve it. Because otherwise they'd be creating the very thing they're there to avoid, which is a differential rate. So that's just a long winded way of saying, yeah, it's fine to go to the BUC. It costs money for which we get nothing in return because we go there to have our rates. And, you know, quite aside from the rest of the logic of doing this or not doing it. I, and I think my colleagues on council are opposed to spending money for which we're getting in return. And that is what happens when you go to the PUC. In terms of some of the other questions that, that, well, maybe I shouldn't answer on behalf of council, but just let me give a couple of personal reactions to them. The, uh, the work that you've been doing with the recreation committee and Bureau of Forestry. It seems to me that you could find a form of works that found not only you, but any of your successors entitled. And those what that work could continue uninterrupted. Going to the other end of the thing. Are we going to sell it to a private entity? I can only give you my personal view on that. And that is the, the only reason any municipality would ever sell its water system, which is, you know, well, the most basic fundamental elements that our citizens require. The only reason we would ever do that in my judgment is if the current and future obligations of continuing to maintain that system were just more than it could, that any small community could be reasonably expected to shoulder. And that is the only basis on which I personally would ever consider selling that system. In the middle.
Richard, can I speak to your comment about the PUC?
Please do.
The, the statement that you made that the administrative law judge would have to approve whatever was submitted because you have rates and I not by the city the same is correct. In the last rate filing, we applied for a rate increase of forty two percent. What we got was about thirty seven percent. They do, and if they decide, they decide that what you're doing isn't something necessary. It also is somewhat of a negotiation process. We went down and met with their, there's an office of customer advocates involved, there's other departments. You're basically getting with discussion of where the numbers came from. And there's a judge made, as you, as you said, that the commission acts to make final action based on a recommendation to it. When the city found out it was obligated to be under fees jurisdiction, which occurred in nineteen seventy two or seventy three, when Harry Crickell was building Coming Village. He wanted both water, applied I am, city said they would not do that. He contacted the PUC. That's when the city became on the PUC's radar and serving outside the city. They were put on notice and went through about a seventy year period of trying to keep from having to comply with that. Actually tried to get legislation passed through what Letterman and even went through a penalty municipal, PML now, tried to get assistance. And ended up having to apply with the PUC. But at the time, we actually set up two sets of records for cost and revenue within the system. We had what we call the green tab and a regular tab. Any work done or revenues incurred in the city were incurred in the regular tab and against outside the city within a separate set of books. Uh, rates are equal. The intent of doing that was because there was the thought that it was more expensive outside the city. And we should have differential rate structures and that the rate outside would be higher. It turned out that that wasn't correct. In fact, it turned out that rate on the cost outside were lower. So it was decided that the rates would be equal in and out, which made it cleaner. When you file an application with the PUC, that made, they, you're right, they're only in charge of the rates outside. But council has always had ordinance making the same rate type inside the city so that it created four to five events with, and we've done that. PUC also, in addition to reviewing the red side, I'm the only thing that falls. From the field day, had a bad bill, they were being more charged something than they could to PUC. Then they filed, they contacted supplier, find out the source. There are other aspects to the fall. You're right.
But isn't it the case, Rick, that when people have complaints against uh, an authority, they, they file that complaint, they call the common piece, which is down the rock. Um, against the city, that complaint has to go to character and go through the most effective discuss. So isn't it more customer friendly to operate a system where rate increases and complacency at the system that will be dealt with within the council?
I'll disagree with that theory. I have some other suggestions, but you're willing to.
I think that's going to hit. Very good.
Go ahead.
There, there's a miscommunication here too. Neither suburban nor the Central Penn County Authority revised of any changing, both of them. I think there's some misconceptions and, and mistaken assumptions and one mistaken assumption was in the marling issue that very twenty twenty three bond issue for water improvements there were, lots involved in that were called series A project. And that service was going to be borne strictly by the city and that was for uh, the cost of the water, the well field acquisition and also the no partages. I don't know why those were assumed to be the city only cost because of logic. There's the urban water authority meeting as an individual and a rate payer on the city market, it's a topic of that sort. And they agreed that anything that's dispaired on any improvement that are shared should be reformed by the two system. That saves your rate payers about a million, one hundred thousand dollars. And it would reduce your need for somebody to rate me. I think there's also some other options and one was read up in the paper with, I mean, one entity with suburban. I think there's some other options. One is to continue to repair and modify operation for two or three years, file a PUC rate increase sufficient for three years. Either one time upfront or a step rate over three years on an annual basis. We've left the city authority to find the filing of the PUC. Use that three year period to evaluate your options and if one set of joint authority, you have to do that. Uh, that is a valid subject pretty quickly. And if you're not familiar with the PUC project or consideration for the future, they want to continue that. The downside is there could be a delay, you're going to have to pay the rate increase and approval. Another option that's one that's suggested in the paper is joint authority covering both this. Which is a good long term option, but the creation of that thing would be very lengthy and delaying the project in current inflation for. Another option is transfer the watershed to them from the well's filtration authority, which is already a joint authority. They could assume the water projects, including the internal financing and penmet. They could engage with the government to complete the KELA design immediately. And the city could create a joint authority for the water system piping itself. And you have time to do that. Uh, that way one entity would be responsible for all the aspects of water supply. And that could happen quickly. Your project could continue on schedule. That could also be made into a long term option of doing that now and then looking at that authority. Expanding if necessary to become, acquiring both water systems, operating everything under the two system. In the end, the decision is that you do need to sell the system. And if you read this publication on the fence, they admit all authorities go to date like I had heard it. Gives a lot of ideas about fit ball that you can be into a business and compare it to the rate system, which is important for your private entities. Uh, talks about the method of evaluation, there's a new method of evaluation now according to what the PUC says that basically tries to make everybody inflate the cost because it made everything look better. But in the end, it just increases the cost of the rate there. I didn't like copies of that.
You want to have a vision, no? Well, yes.
I do have copies of, all right, expounding, there are good.
If we would stand at the KELA dam and figure out how to get water to fill a hole, we wouldn't have the system we're in there. But we do have the system, as you said, getting from that to something that makes sense is a long process. So I don't think that either considering selling the water system, which I really said all I need to say. Um, or trying to merge suburban and the city or Florida, if you want. They should not delay the, the I, I don't think they're viable alternative for the, the problem which we're immediately needing to solve, which is that next year and in the subsequent years, there is a need not only to raise rates, but to raise them considering that. And I think there were two things at the forefront of our mind in that. One was that those rates apply to Wayne Township and Catherineia Township, who currently have no seat at the table. Um, and the second is that uh, in order to meet our debt obligations, we kind of need to impose a first we go rate increases on a pretty timely basis. And we should not expend nine months of time, and I don't know how much money in having the PUC help us in that process when we can find a way of doing it in the same way that suburban does, simply by responding to the need by, by raising the rates. And it's kind of disappointed to think that when we engage in a lot of detailed analysis, we determined that rate increases in this street that people could walk away thinking, well, the city does feather in his net. That's not the case and that's not why we sit on this council. I respect everything that you've told us and I know that you have knowledge of how this system works, that this, that we've operated or not. I'm not sure that I really heard any way in which the city or party in the way that it's currently operated would relieve us of those two urgent obligations. Uh, one is to establish a, a rate increase. Uh, one is to establish um a rate increase that will not bankrupt the system. And and two. To try to incur only those costs that are absolutely necessary and not um. Additional costs in a way that the B U C can do our job better than we can. All I have to say really.
Richard, we're gonna disagree. We're gonna agree to disagree by. Biggest concern here is the magnitude of the difficulty. And the landing of the project is a bigger cost than a lot of the other things. Like with your engineering firm and talk about scheduling. I think that they were really like start that design on the killer. The cost factor that they were in before. And that's the reason that the city authority offered to come up with a plan to have fund that design for the given underway. You don't start that part of it. Cause the ways that you're gonna get, especially if you're gonna end up transferring your contract to a one authority. Which has to be created, has to generate revenue to be able to fund itself, and has to organize and has to. And they're into engineering dreams. It could end up being saying it's not higher, different engineering. It can come to that point. Delay those projects, we talk about roughly a thirty one million dollar total. Delay that to figure out what the what the inflation is, the three percent or five percentage, awful lot of money and. Talking about the cost of a rating freeze now, maybe. Or three or four fires down the road. I understand that there's some internal from Penmet, a dive in. Penmet funding is down the road after it's designed. You need to get the design in place. Now, where are you gonna run that in time?
Because the city followed the advice of the city engineer and others involved. The city paid outright last year one hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars out of its water fund, which is now in the hole. To cover the costs that were already incurred for Keller. Because they are not reimbursable. Those costs were sent by request of the engineer of suburban water authority. In January of this year, a three and a half inch stack of documentation they requested was sent to them. No response was ever given as to whether suburban health station reimbursed the city for any of that cost. I still would never receive word on that. So the city is out one hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars, which is not a small amount of money compared to this compared to thirty one million. But you have to understand the trepidation of a group of people wanting to incur more expense that may not be reimbursable. And that is an issue, truthfully, when you were looking at Penmet. Because they ultimately control that reimbursement path. So if they won't reimburse the expenses of the engineer because they're too far away. Then that's something the council would have to come up with that path. Which is an expense. That is something that brought about the conversation.
That's the legitimate share cost, this suburban can be approached where they act.
They were asked, they would share that cost. At the February meeting, when the city planned its burden, we saw that it was on their agenda. And like, no responses ever come from it for them as to whether or not they'll share the costs for twenty eighteen. Um, and in fact, they never legitimately gave. Uh, yes, we are responsible for the twenty twenty three debt that shares. They just said that seems reasonable. It's not the thing making a commitment that you're replying.
It should be built. My thing, they should be built and you even brought this, not hearing anything.
We have bills out to suburban right now for unpaid permits. We have bills out to suburban and notice to violate for inappropriate work that they did in the city. They were issued the notice of violation. But they don't pay them.
About the other money you just discussed it. Did you build them for that?
June, I sent them a letter explaining what the costs were. What the shared costs were. And their engineers said in order to determine that they would need more documentation, I provided the three and a half inch worth of documentation for her back.
Well, I think that's an error, and I'm sure tomorrow they'll read the paper and realize they owe you the money.
We'll see. That'd be great.
Oh, awesome.
Are they doing, are they, they must be back, let me get a reading. The other thing I just want to add, Keller Dam. That's been on the radar, just words Keller Dam have have been on the radar of the city authority for years. I'm assuming it's been on your radar for years too. So it's not a surprise, I find to you, I'm sure, when you see what it's going to cost to finish the work. And it shouldn't be a surprise to continue to. Find this project or do the design work that's necessary or pay the engineers that are necessary. That shouldn't be a surprise. It's been needed by the D E P. They want it done. They want it done now. And that really is a resource for us to continue providing water. Or you said there would be no water stop. Uh, oh, we just need the dams active. So uh, we need them repaired and we need them generating water. So that's, you're looking at the clock, Joel. I quit.
We have a saying in England, June, about the 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 sky being dark with the wings of chickens coming down to. Uh, that's exactly where we all gather.
I think that this discussion will continue when we get to our next meeting. So um, why don't we take our our recess here? Um. Five minutes.
I just wanted to say thank you to the city authority.
You're gonna make. I give them well.
Yeah, it's doing a lot better.
Yeah.
That's dirty in the back.
I'm on my.
Absolutely. Better, I look better at the fall. All right, we'll pass seven. Call meeting back order. And we'll go to uh. Six A comments, comments residents and city taxpayers, any one that. Eric, you raise your hands. Oh, go ahead.
Yes, yeah, so um, I did send a letter to your council that everybody could see that. I know that Mr. Watson did respond that.
Yeah.
I mean, I I think that everything in there sums up, you know, my concerns as far as. Still gaining access to my property. Actually, were there um, you're uh. Um. New ordinance has written does not allow for a turnaround of any kind. Um, the roadway there is only about thirty feet wide pavement. Um, and a lot of it is adunked in. Uh, evergreens landscaping in the sidewalk and then the other side just need to move both. So there really isn't any room for me to turn around if I have a train. I'm not either after that. I mean, or or maybe it's like evergreens property, it would be just. So. It closes down without a turnaround, and I think it's a little unfair to me as a problem. So. I may eat to a property the same way that walkers did. So I mean, you know, if it um. The the gentleman that went for the uh. The ordinance, the variance. Um, he wants to make it into a used car lot. He needs the room for the street. I mean, you know, you're changing the use of the property and ends and ends, you know, maybe it's that I can't use. My property in saying that it's been used for a very long time. Things really unreasonable.
I'm here. Craig, if you want to address how to go, how what the impact is there?
Um, let me jump. In the notes. So. As. Was pointed out in fact by Mark Driver at um a prior council meeting when the city was considering vacating Third Avenue. That uh portion of property on Railroad Street is part of what's called Price Edition. So uh all the other owners in that flat of Price Edition. Still would retain uh a kind of easement over that portion of Railroad Street. If it is vacated, so they would still be able to drive through there. It can't be curved. It can't be barricaded. You would still have the ability to drive through. So I think what they're planning on doing is one side of the street parking, then kind of like a group path to. And then use cars. But I can't say that for certain. I am not the designer of this property. But there still is an easement. That you would have uh as the owner of one of the parcels in that price division. To be able to have assets through that.
Is there that anywhere in writing? Cause I I've never heard of what you just said. So I guess that's that's my concern. Is there? Is there anywhere where it said that in writing? It says that I will still be able to have. Egress out of the. Out of that property at the end of that street because I spoke with the property owner and. You know, our discussion was, well, how are you gonna keep traffic out? And he said, well, I'll have to put something on to stop the traffic. Cause he's not gonna want the traffic driving through where he's gonna have the used car lot.
Well, it's in a letter from. The city solicitor to me.
Right.
But Mr. Driver may be able to get you that information since he's the one that works our unit to the city.
Yes, I can use you. But my concern is, you know, how how am I gonna get out? I mean, you know, um, and with which guarantees? I guess if if the idea is to have a used car lot, you know, is it? Is it going to be a simple issue for me to to go after the owner of the property when there's cars parked in the way? Right now, it's a public roadway, it's still there. And the other thing is, so like, there are plenty of tenants that park on Second Street there and there's other property. Are they gonna do three point turns to get out? Are they gonna have to utilize the alleyways or how? You know, I mean, will the tenants be able to drive out through as well? And I guess how will that all be, you know, if if the new owner wants to have a car lot there? How is he going to, I guess, how are you gonna know that the tenants, the property owners and, you know what I mean? Like, how would that even be done regularly?
It's anyone in the price edition. That's a pretty significant area of land, nearly the entire third ward.
Um, okay, so I I wouldn't understand that. Yeah, I I would have to see. So you're saying that whole like area down there?
Not just the flats right there, but it goes up like Sesquoin and Avenue. The Price Edition is a pretty big piece of property. Uh, but we have that on uh. City map. I'm not sure it's on the website, but we put it on the website. It shows the name and or boundary of every addition to the city.
I thought we would. Establish when we looked at this the first time now that. Um. There was an adequate turnaround.
You did say that for safety equipment part that they could turn around sixty feet wide. That that was sufficient for turning around.
Or the snow plows.
Yeah, so I would imagine. Very normal personal vehicle could do so as well.
There's not sixty feet there. And I actually physically measured it. There's thirty feet of pavement there. A lot of that, the right away is sixty feet long, sixty feet wide. I'll agree with that. But the the actual paved area is thirty feet and it narrows the closer that you get to the railroad track. Because there's. Because there's a tree there on the corner. So, you know, once again, so a a this, like, most of your right away is eight on five, the sidewalk and evergreen and their landscape. So you lose a lot there. And then there's the grass, there are the utility poles, so I would say the landscaping in the sidewalk would be on the north side of the road. And then the the grass and the utility poles themselves. See, thirty feet of pavement, and like I said, the closer you get to the railroad track, I'm gonna do it in front of mine. So the closer you get to the tracks, the more it narrows. So I mean. They're they're not sixty feet there. I mean, there's a sixty foot right. But just like in the in a city, so like the sidewalks or the roadway. The property things are back in everybody's yards, back behind the sidewalk. So there's not sixty feet there, there's thirty feet in line that it narrows if you get. You will have to three the turn. If you've got a trailer on, I I would, I would have to ask for a demonstrate. Without using Evergreens property. Are we officially on the side of money agenda?
Well, no, we hadn't gone to that, he just wanted to bring it up as. You want to hold on to that and get to it on the agenda? Okay, any other Thomas? Get your name.
And Thomas, now it's man there is to be. Thirteen fifty-four, we're over. I also have property in a hanger on the airport property. And I received yesterday a letter from Mr. Wilson. Stating his intent to sell the airport. That was blindsided to not only the airport manager, the secretary and all the. People that participated. I'd like to go on record as I've seen that, I think the airport is a important part of the history. Of this area. And it brings in. A lot more business that is. And it's usually visible to the. The accounting firms. I went as far as on the. Aircraft owners and pilots association would all remember and. A majority of us aircraft owners are a member. They had a national regal team. That works with airport closures, they're very successful in this. And I got he contacted immediately back. And I have an email with them stating some of the roadblocks in the city would have to involve. And I'd like to present that for your review before the city council thought to vote on what was proposed is. Pay thousands of dollars to get the airport appraised, to get this appraisal that may. Be just wasted money because the airport has other obligations, especially because federal grant money that was received.
Thank you.
I will clarify that I don't own any city owned property. So I did not send a letter that said I intend to sell the airport. I sent a letter that says, and I quote, the city may be interested soon in selling the airport for aviation use. The reason that you received that letter was your heads up. So if there can't be more heads up to heads up. This was sent to the tenants and to the businesses that are associated so that you have fair advance warning. That the city may be considering that in the future, it does not say the city is.
That. There's a large. That were very actively proposed.
So, so let me ask you just a, just a basic question. And that is. What do you think the top? Powerful hanging rental rate is local? From a pilot's standpoint, if you had to rent a hanger. What is the top dollar that you would pay? Because we. We need to, we need, we're going to need to get there.
I think that. Lock Haven is very competitive in their hanger rounds. And.
More than competitive is unfortunate.
If you go into more metropolitan areas, now you're talking. Six hundred dollars per hanger with that. Yes, I think Lock Haven is competitive. I think. I don't disagree that. The airport. Could be managed a little bit differently, could be a little bit more efficient. And be positive, there's a lot of airports. That. Have formed an airport authority. And the authority. A direct management of the airport and had more hands on thing than having the city, which is involved in. A lot of different facets of management, which airport management, they may or may not be their expertise. And so an airport authority may be the answer more effectively operate the airport rather than it managed by the city. There's other options to have out there, but. What I was opposed to anyways, to sell the airport or put the airport. Possibly to a non aviation use. To be detrimental to the area.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Say your name, please.
Deer crossing signs on Free Drive. Free Drive is only fifty miles an hour speed limit posted from Earlman Street to the Huntington Borough. And no. No. So I called last year and. Four weeks ago. I believe Wendy, she said they were going to send it over to the Public Works Office. They're still. You can see the fifteen mile per hour signs that you're coming off of Earlman Street onto Free Drive. Or when you're traveling from Huntington Borough, which Free Drive turns into the sign.
Yeah. Just literally.
And so when you're coming there, I'm finding you on to Free Drive. I took picture, I'm sorry. You can't even see the fifteen mile per hour sign in number three and the sign. So I would like to see. Please.
Here, here in Lockar Public Works directors here tonight.
We did work. I love it on Earlman Street and that have two locations.
Now it's free.
Yeah, all free. I think Earlman. There's here.
Well, two weeks ago, there's mother and she had two fawns. Mother and two fawns made it to three, but little fawns, who am I doing, who am I doing? So I stopped and then a infinity truck was coming, so we waited till it decided to pop through and get the rest of the family. One thing I don't want to see driving along there, I don't want to see is.
Will you put that over in the wall? We were.
Yeah, I want to check the fifteen mile per hour signs under that tree and send that a little bit in the the winds are coming. But I appreciate that.
Wait, it's been the question. Thank you. Any other public comment? I will move on. Funding request from Roads to Peace.
We have a letter to council from Roads to Peace after council voted at the last meeting to request that. If they were interested that Roads to Peace could make presentation to city council for some of the funds that it has remaining. For civic contributions for the year. And the executive director, the Aloro, is here from Roads to Peace. To just speak a little bit about what it does.
Hi, Roads to Peace is, we are the domestic violence and sexual self services for the entire county. Some counties, but we're located here in Lock Haven and a lot of, and do business mostly here in Lock Haven. So it's important work that we do every day and unfortunately, we're pretty busy every day too. And we were very excited to get the invitation to apply for some funding because it's always difficult funding to come by. And the funding is. I didn't read all the rules or, I don't know. Funding is being cut over time, like a lot of our funding comes from a planner called Boca that's part of. General funding that comes through that being here now going down. So we're looking everywhere to get, keep things, to bring in a little more money here and there to try to. Certain things are being lost along the way, unfortunately. Hopefully things will swing the other way, but at least the budget we have, we're gonna. Get paid. So anyway, we were just, I again, we're excited to ask, be able to ask, and we're just here hoping that maybe some of those funds that you have left could be. Donated to our organization to help continue our path we have been here since nineteen seventy nine. Doing business with them.
Thank you.
From the last city. House to very open that, so we need a motion to actually. Do that now, correct?
Correct, to allocate funding from that line I have.
Do I have a motion though?
Well, I would move that we. Allocate the remaining funds that we have sequestered. To Roads to Peace, it was a very comprehensive application, I think it's deserving of support.
The unallocated dollar amount is ten thousand dollars.
That is the motion.
That's the motion.
Who has a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments?
Comments, doesn't mean that we have that much balance left next year. I think you should apply and go into the funding system. I mean, this is a windfall for you. I wouldn't budget ten thousand dollars.
Definitely, thank you.
Because we'd like to spread it amongst. Other organizations, I'm sure they're needing to, I mean, there may be somebody else coming forward. Later this year, but we're going to say, I'm sorry, we're we're out of funds. So there's only so much in there. That's all there is.
Any other questions, comment? Call for the votes.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Concorde.
Yes.
Councilmember Mordorri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Braker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Thank you.
And now that we've agreed it. If I could just make a comment that I'm rather hopeful that. Now that council has taken this. That it might stimulate other companies, both public and private, to join us in support of what I consider to be a very worthwhile organization. I think the original Hilton House was largely set up with. It was largely private initiative and it would be good to see that.
Thank you. Six C Farm City Farm Family Festival sign.
And you know that's. If you said. So Farm City Family Festival. Is the annual request to put a sign up in Hannah Park. With council's approval, we would let them know that that's.
Your motion? Second. Motion for and second any further discussion, questions, comments? What's your?
When is this?
It will be held on September eighth. And it takes place at the. County Fairground.
Please wait for me.
At the fairground where it takes place. Any other questions or comments? Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yes.
Councilmember Concorde.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mordorri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Braker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Do we have anything else under public comment, question?
I'm not sure.
Okay, unfinished business. Seven A Consideration of Ordinance Number Twenty Point Three Thousand Zero Six.
This is the second reading of an ordinance providing for the vacating portion of Railroad Street, a distance of approximately three hundred ninety five feet. It's been advertised three times, it has been thirty days since the first reading. As required by law, and this evening, Mark Dreyer is here on behalf of the property owner who made the original request to council.
Mr. Dreyer.
I have nothing to say, we went through this the other meeting, I know this is one of the public. Ability to respond to it, you know. You've seen the overheads, you've seen it, you know, you know what you're talking about here. And we just hope that one of your city council will continue with it. The parking lot that you cost way has its access further up on Second Street. Didn't be affected so long as the. They, the vehicles are turned around. They concerned. Do I think it's not considered like a purpose of law?
Yeah, and I do, and and this is a concern because I see it happen. Many places in the city. So if we look at the, at the aerial photograph of the of the area and we look at the. The semi blueprint exhibit A one. You'll see that Second Street at about Mary's Alley on the overhead view begins to narrow. I'm guessing, although I, there's I, there's no way I have of knowing this. I'm guessing that the property owners along that last section of. Of Second Street over the years, because of the limited amount of traffic that was on it. And that's become green space. And 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 some, by the looks of it, some hardscape has ended up there. So I'm not sure that. That we may not need to take action from the city standpoint. To. To check the. The surveys there, make sure that those property lines are accurate. Because you're, you're correct, we can see the narrowing on the overhead, overhead view. And and I'm concerned that. Those are the kind of things that happen all over in neighborhoods, especially on alleys and things like that, and on curbs on alleys. And I think that they get overlooked over time. And it seems to be just by looking. At those two images that they can both be true. And looking at the curving on the foundation side. Of the road seems to be. To stay current with the rest of the road. It's the other side that's the problem. Which, which Mr. Dreyer may, may come right up against that last corner building in the overhead view.
I mean, I'm not looking at the same aerial that you have.
Maybe not.
I mean, you would, the Public Works would have to drive the. I mean, you would, the public works would have to drive the.
Okay, so you had a chance.
Yeah, I don't come out of these buildings, I'm coaching, but it's not.
Right, it's green space that is.
And into the, the right away. So what do you suggest?
Uh, well, I, look, I think to table this for another two weeks, but. Or until the next meeting, but I would like. I would like the city staff to look at the. And I know it's limited, but to look at the actual. Property lines long there to make sure that we are accurate. Or which one of those two are accurate, because they're not both act. A one and a, well, they're both marked A one, exhibit A one, but they can't both be accurate.
The roadmap would be the accurate, but again, that doesn't mean that encroachment hasn't happened.
Right, right.
But the city would just have to reestablish.
The law, right, that's what I.
Correct, if you want to make.
I do want to make a motion with apologies to table it for another two weeks.
But isn't that a different issue than, than railroad street if you're talking about finally claiming the right of seconds and seconds?
It may be an issue, but if there's sixty feet of width to turn there, it may not be as much of an issue.
It could impact the decision of.
Right.
Someone whether they want to actually let that road be.
Correct, and, and if we're looking at the practical turnaround, not necessarily the full right away, but.
Right.
But you can look into that.
Yeah, perfect.
On the motion.
Yes.
If I may ask a question, if, if, if. I guess, I, I think that you're right, so if. If the idea is to close the street, why not just require a, a, beside the whole turnaround to make sure. He said about like, there was a comment made about, you know, city where it's either turned around, whatever. I mean, I believe you guys have a trailer, pick a truck, pick up truck and a trailer down and see if they can turn it around. That doesn't mean that you've been to Evergreen then to actually turn it around. And, you know, and my, my other question is, you also brought it about that there is a, I guess the right to get, to get out of it. It would, so you said they would stay with the property owners? Right away would stay there or?
Right, that's on the original plan for the price addition, so anyone who owns property in the price addition. Still has needs meant to. You know. Go across that property, it can't be blocked.
Okay, and, and it doesn't give like a width of distance?
No.
No detail to decide that there would be.
You would still have the ability, you should still have the ability to travel through there, that doesn't mean two lane traffic.
Understand.
But would it lay it out for this twenty two feet that's listed here? You know.
Well, I'd have to pull the price edition.
I guess that's my, that's my concern, you know, like, if, if there's not a substantial turnaround. So then it becomes, if, if the road is closed. And I need to get out, and I can't get through because they put in there the hard lock in, or they put in. They put up physical barriers, then it's going to be a civil issue for me to allow. I can get out because it's no longer my boat. So I guess if the, if the plan is not to close it off. Why do you do all this to vacate the street? Is it still going to be a street or not a street?
It would not be a street if we.
Maybe a parlor.
But they still have a street to get through.
It would be a private easement is what it sounds like.
For two hundred cars.
What's that?
For, for the whole entire lottery here, right? Over here with the.
No, I mean, for, for those who want to. If they're entitled, if, if it's, if it was laid out for the development, and solicitor says. As we kept building, then it would be kept open in the, as private.
But in reality, anybody should be able to use, but you're not that expect. Their cars.
Yeah.
Because I just live over here.
Right.
So I could technically cut them. Technically. So, so I've talked to some people and some people have asked me, what happens if another property owner wants to. Do the exact same thing and they shut down another street, basically we give them free land for. Their property, so for instance. Stella A's, we've been allowing them to use the city alley. For free, or bring business in during the, the summer months. Why don't we just give Stella A's alley? Or found an hour, that's just one less thing for us to, to worry about, they don't have to come as ordinances. So that's, that was just a question that was brought up to me. Because it's benefiting Stella A's. By using that land.
Understand that, and that would be a separate issue.
I know, but what I'm saying is, if, if we give the road over for a business to prosper without no cost. That means we're benefiting this and we're setting a precedent. So if another company or another business wants to have. A benefit, because we're setting precedent as some said, why don't we, why wouldn't we do that for the other ones?
If I can do the suggested part answer anyways. This is a unique circumstance, if you look at, you know, when you see like to turn off or from railroad street, you can't go see around the corner for first grade. There's some problems with this little trip, and then there's the fact that it's, you've got the right away there, you can't go forward anymore, but. And, and the fact that on the other side, the only other thing about it on the other side. Opening further up on second streets, kind of, kind of uniquely circled.
I, I agree, it's been a. But it's been a business for multiple years and they've had cars going in and out, your. Customers are planning a park in, in your parking lot, right? So they're going to go in and out of that same street that you're saying the dangers are, correct?
Well, maybe saying more there if they're going into business as opposed to.
But they're going to park that forever.
I assume.
So.
Any, any, any development of a business there will have its own set of criteria to follow. And its own hearings for, for commercial development, so those questions would be addressed, and if it, if it's impractical, then. It won't happen.
Well, past precedent, unless deemed that it's a major accident. Issue we've put lights up years ago or we've done something different, but. That, that was, that was my thought.
So I have a motion on the floor to be able to. Really look at those couple of issues, correct?
Yeah.
I'll second the motion table.
Motion for a second? Any further discussion?
Well, I think, I think I'll be inclined to. Echo in terms. Dreyer's concern, that there may be an issue with how much the second street has gone wild. That's nothing to do with this ordinance, which is to placate. A different property altogether. And I don't know how we can make the one condition among the other in any logical way. So if there's a motion to take, I'm going to oppose it.
I think that we have some, some work to do, at the very least. To confirm what we're saying is true, that people are going to be able to. Thoroughfare through this space in the event of an emergency or in the event that they need to. So I feel like that question hasn't been answered, and I think that Mr. Jacob springs up a good point. About his own access in his own vehicle, so I mean, I don't know how frequently you drive. The trail or through there, if it's a daily occurrence for you, a monthly occurrence or twice a year. But I think that that's a question that's been asked that my feeling has not been adequately answered, especially the part about. The easement, that's the term we're using across the, across the right, giving people a right of way. I just don't feel like those, those questions haven't been answered, now that they've been raised, I feel like that's probably something we need. I feel like I'd like to know the answer.
Well, I think there's a, there is a simple solution to that. And I'm sorry for having been a pain in the rear end about this. Property description, but it seems to me that we could, in section A, which describes. What is being located, we. At the sentence at the end that says subject for existing meetings to break.
Oh, I did it, I think that, that all we're doing is table, we're getting some time, further investigate. And. Make sure that we're making the best that we can make, now if there's anything that hurts. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Sir, you, you're right, and you said it out, that, that the, that the property easement is there or? Mr. Victor Moore.
Mr. Moore.
Come on, you, you said that they, you're, you're going to oppose it because you, you don't think that that. That right away is there or it's been encroached on or?
No, I. I'm opposing the motion to table because I think that, that we have two separate issues. I'm proposing a solution to the turnaround problem by adding language to the property.
Oh, Richard, I would say that, I think that that's just pushing it through, and I think that you can still do that. After we've had time to investigate.
Well, I divert you about a joke.
It is.
You want to put a title on it, on the deferment? I mean, there is a business person who wants to continue with other permits and other. Things to move forward and us delaying that also. Puts an imposition on him, so if you put like a two week till next meeting or something, and they either get, they get the information.
Yeah, it's what it's like, and he can say two minutes.
Okay.
So, yeah, he's, he's saying table it with next meeting, give us that time to look into these questions, right?
Yeah. So, attorney Dreyer, you, is the two week delay, two week table an issue? Or?
I appreciate you asking, but no, I don't think so, and I will tell you frankly, I want to make sure and see about the easement as well. First I've heard of it about the, of the addition being there for now in private. Certainly it's that way, if it's laid out, then I'd open by municipality, in this case it has been opened by the municipality. So I want to look at that, I, I'll let us know if you're able to follow me, the solicitor advisor or if, if you can. Give me the gist and.
Yeah, I'll have the GIS text, hold the map.
And then, is that a couple of office?
Yes, but they don't have. Couple of Ryan and Howser is our solicitor, but they don't have our map.
Right, okay, but like you said, you received some advice, the solicitor about.
Yes, we did, from Justin.
All right, anything you can give me within the next two weeks would be great, I appreciate it, but I do appreciate, frankly, I'll be happy to listen to you. Appreciate you being careful.
We just want to make sure that we're covering everybody's concerns here, if we can. All right, call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerly.
Yeah.
Councilmember Concorde.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mordor, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Braker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes, thank you, thank you for your patience. Any other, oh, moving on with this first one. Seven B, consideration of ordinance number twenty point three dash zero seven.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lock Haven. That expresses the invention of the city to first acquire the water and wastewater systems from Lock Haven City Authority. And second, to assume all financial and contractual obligations of the authority. And third, terminate the authority, all in accordance with the Pennsylvania municipal, municipality authorities. And this has been advertised. And is available on the city's website as well, and it's provided to you, the Lock Haven City. The first reading. This one.
Do I have a motion?
That's a question.
You may.
Thank you. It's brought up that we would, we dissolve, have a new joint authority. That the timing, the way we take that back. We want to be able to do what we want to do. I'm on there, so that everything continues as planned. By making a new authority, am I correct in that assumption, or if we make a new authority. That'll take a year and everything gets pushed back like the three to six percent like that. What the subcommittee discussed with the other two entities was that the most. Like cost effective and advantageous way forward would be for the joint municipal authority, which is basically the adoption of an ordinance. In each of the municipalities form. Point members to. The most advantageous thing for them would be to hire the city as a contractor for billing. And also for operations, because the city is already doing its feature, though. You would have to advertise the ordinance in each municipality, but we've done that for, for ordinances for tonight alone, so. Now, in essence, could take a month for the municipalities to do the ordinances together. Operations, you can have the attorneys take as much or as little time as you need. I'm sure they would like to take more than less, but you know, the agreement on operation and bylaws can be updated over time. But the most advantageous way forward would be for the city to be the contractor. It's like the county sewer authority hires Johnson to control its four operations. But it wouldn't delay the Keller project or. But again, the Keller project is delayed in part by funding and in part by the fact that the engineers told me that. Have not received confirmation from the, the, for the proposal.
Yes, sir. So sure, there's been discussing about the makeup of a new joint authority board. And I know there's concern about whether or not the city would retain a majority of members that. As the city had the most. Is, and that been? Planned, is, is, is there been any agreement that?
There hasn't been any agreement on anything.
Okay. But as there.
There's been a discussion, there's been no agreement on any, there's, I mean, it was simply a discussion, that is all we had done. Was open that door for discussion, no agreement, no, no, you know, find all the little details, none of those things happened. We don't have an agreement for capacity anyway.
Yeah, I understand, I mean, that's a key, that's a key point, I think, that citizens of the city should be concerned about that. They cede. A little bit of control and they have the most customers by far. That would, we all live in the city, that would be a concern of mine, that. If it comes down to a straight vote, I want the city members to be able to vote for the city. Users, I know it's a joint authority, but you're still looking at your own citizens. That would be a concern that in those continued discussions, that, that'd be a pretty hard point, that i- if we can. And make it all work, we want to maintain some control there.
I have a question, I sure have asked before, we're still struggling. I don't disagree with the whole joint municipal authority approach and so on, but. What precludes us from leaving this place that we have an agreement that joint municipal authority can have?
Because we can't do anything as long as the current authority, we can't form a new authority while the.
Well, no, we can't, but we could talk about the structure and so on, not do anything legally and, and get agreements that they'd like to do, right? I, I'm just throwing that out in question.
You're negotiating an ass, you're negotiating the distribution of an asset you don't own. And so do we.
Well, let me ask another question. If the. Proposal is, and I think that's what we discussed. That a joint municipal authority would hire the city. As a contractor to manage its assets. Why could the city or company. Not agree with the city to terminate its lease and hire the city as its manager?
Actually, you and I have things of information that we're agreeing on. The city authority could add members. Wayne and Taffey County potentially become a joint authority. Think you indicated you felt that. There was a difference between that and the new authority. And actually, the only difference from what I've been told through the attorneys was.
if if you take the city authority and you expand it by adding members outside, the municipality that formed the original authority can dissolve that authority without the approval of the other entity. They don't have a say in that. But it does give the representation from the outside municipalities to the current authority who wanted to do this. Then what you're talking about is just the negotiation process of do we dissolve lease, do we hire the city to do it?
Because it.
I guess, Richard, what I'm after is look at these options before you make a decision. It sounds like you feel you only have two options. The one maybe okay, the other one, I think is terrible. You decide to sell the system. I think you lose control. You have somebody that's looking at shareholders and need to make a profit. You're looking at impact. You're losing control. I'll give you this publication to look at. You can see a comparison of systems that are recently taken over by private entities. And the rates are much different.
But Rich, all due respect, and I don't disagree with anything you said, but we're not talking about that now. We're talking about one thing now. And to bring that up now is it just muddled waters. We we may talk about that five years from now, ten years from now. But we're not talking about selling the system now. We're talking about one thing, joint authority. Am I right or am I missing something?
I understand what you're saying, but in the letter that was sent to the town.
I get that, Rich, but we need to focus on what we need to decide, whether it's tonight or whether it's tabled within the next reasonable amount of time. We're not talking about selling the system. We're talking about the potential, maybe could happen, probably won't five, ten years from now.
But Doug, you interrupted him. He's right. The letter that was sent to the two township clearly indicates, you're not interested. We're going to consider selling the whole kit and kaboodle.
And June, we might. We also may not.
Five years from now or ten years from now. That's belonging to.
That's not belonging, June, because we may or we may not. May is a pretty big word. We didn't say we would. If you want to get to semantics, let's get to semantics.
Well, it's my understanding that we don't have interest in from Caspia or Wayne in joining a municipal authority.
And I don't know that.
Well, I've heard it.
Well, you hear, I hear a lot of things and everything on the internet is true too.
I heard from a person, a person who backed across the committee. I heard it.
Well, June, you may be right, but that's a moot point.
No, it's not. That's what you're talking about.
Well, let let me tell you that the subcommittee had a very encouraging meeting with the township.
Okay, we haven't heard that. I asked you what would.
I you actually did hear that. I I explained that at the meeting of the filtration authority. That we had a very positive meeting.
And then from Jack. That he talked to the.
He was not at that.
No, but he said he talked to Wayne and Castania and they're not except really accepting this favor. That's what he said. So you said and then he said.
Well.
I.
They just told me the same.
I'm sorry to interrupt. We have had one meeting. It was an invitation to Castania and to Wayne Township to get together and discuss the options. That is exactly what happened. No final decisions were made. Nobody exchanged any anything other than this is what we are proposing. This is where we want to bring you in as an organization to represent Pasadena, Wayne and the city, all of us together to work on this. That was the thrust of the conversation. And I felt like they were very perceptive to it. Now, when they walked away from there and there were, you know, other things that went on. Mr. Peters wasn't there, just to be clear, but I thought it was very positive and there were a lot of, there was a lot of interest in, and there were a lot of questions, Rich. We haven't had a second meeting. This was one meeting for one hour. And this is a really big deal. It wasn't something that was, that could have been decided right that minute. I think there's a lot of assumptions being made about one meeting. I agree with you. I mean, except in the back of my mind is P U C. To circumvent the city from having to apply to P U C. That's one part of it. And I. It is the major part. It is one part of it, June, and I think it's really, I think it's been portrayed very unfairly and I apologize, but you suggested our integrity was questionable. I I appreciate you saying that because that keeps me honest. It was one meeting. It lasted one hour and there was a discussion about what our options were for representation from the citizens of both Wayne Township, Castania Township and the city, all of us together. To insinuate that there was some sort of sneaky, underhanded thing going on. That wasn't the case. I don't think I went that far. Okay.
Well, we really shouldn't be having this conversation across the bed, but but going to reach the 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 question of adding Wayne and Castania to the city authority. I think was not solved the problem. Because you have not altered the relationship between the authority and the city. And it's that relationship that gets you to the P U C. So I come back again to my question, why is it not possible to change that relationship between the city and the authority by appointing the city as the authority's manager? If you do that, then you could, for other reasons which are desirable in my view, add Castaner and Wayne to that as part, but I think we have to do it that way.
Well, Mr. Pat, actually, in nineteen eighty-three, I proposed at one point that the city authority basically as the owners become the operators of the minimum agency to do the operation. But that kind of. But that gets back to what I'm saying, that is how I gave out there. Look at the options before you finally decide.
Well, I want to, Richard, the way you talk over this.
My only comment is seeing that you should have got all your ducks in a row before you dissolve it. And it appears to me that you don't because you don't. You've had an invitation to these companies, but they haven't replied. You don't know if they're really interested. You just need to have, my feeling is you have your ducks in a row.
Which is why I asked.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Why? Why can't we just, and I I understand what city manager is saying when he's, well, you're negotiating something you don't own. Oh, we can take this action at any point. We've talked to them about, are you interested in getting involved in this? What would, what might involve or how would it look? And then we've made that decision. Then we can take these.
Yes.
However, I live in Alton, Alton, but I have a property here in City. My comment to this is, well, Mr. Martin, I just said it's very true. I have a problem personally with the way of water survey was presented online. Very biased in the way that questions are written. It almost leads you, you know, somewhat like leading a witness in court down the road to like it looks like you want to push, someone's trying to push the sale of a private entity, which as Mr. Martin Caddick has alluded to, would be a disaster. That's been proven time and time again in this column. So I'll just give you a prime example. There's a note in there reflecting in there about five million dollars for two wells. Which actually, you know, the city is going to incur that cost. Well, some of that cost has been incurred. And that's not appropriately, you know, represented, or you know, or those facts are now there that people taking the survey. I think that's that's truly wrong. You know, those wells actually were proven or were drilled by Council Barren. Those had worked very well. They were authorized, the city was authorized last week to begin testing of those wells. So they could be put into production for the Keller drill. So there again, I go back to, I don't know who put the survey together, but it seems very biased or very biased. I don't think it's accurate. I think, you know, like some people say they're putting the cart before the horse. I think somebody could go back and revise that survey. Put the facts out there. Don't lead people to arrive at an answer you want. I'm glad you're not talking about, right, really. But I agree, a joint municipal authority would be great. But then here comes the other thing, you know, come with it. What about the assets that the city of, you know, the people, the city of Lock Haven, the cake? Was it not the city of Lock Haven residents? The land is up there? How are you going to control that land? If you turn it over to a joint authority and you don't have control, you control.
The water rate payers purchase that.
Yeah, but what's the benefit from selling it off and developing it?
But that's the city as well as Castania and Wayne Township. They're water customers too. So water customers paid for those at the, and paid for their improvement. We have city residents that are not customers of the city's water system. There's, their customers are suburban. So their utility fees didn't help purchase like that land. So if you are one of those residents, we didn't use your taxes in order to you know, create the water system. The water system was created using the user.
All right. And what would you do with any money that you received in the sale of that? I mean, you know, you are, you are limited under Pennsylvania state law. Would you do it?
Well, it's a good point. We aren't in discussion to do that at this point. It was put out there as a possibility in a letter which which justified the question. But we haven't gone down that road. So, you know, the fact that it was put in the letter certainly.
That's good. Yeah, I'm saying, I think, I think it would be prudent to pull that survey back, revise it, put notice out there to people of what your true intent here is, which seems to be a joint municipal authority. And rephrase those questions so they aren't misleading. Taxpayers need to know, they've incurred the cost already, or should I say not taxpayers, ratepayers.
Right.
You know, some of those costs are, um it is on the book for. And you know, another thing I've heard is where are, where is the city in terms of discussing Pennvest? I never hear anything about that. I heard that kind of like fell off the radar.
When you.
And that.
And that, with all money that's out there via the, uh, the if it's like your document act or the infrastructure investment and jobs act in twenty twenty-two, Pennvest is flush with money. The city with our income here should be able to get a sizable grant, I would assume.
We actually didn't qualify for a grant for the first five million dollars.
Okay.
Which is not given from anyone. That five million dollars is being paid currently. It is a Pennvest loan that's for the work that's being done at all. It covers all by two hundred and about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars worth of work at all. It is all a loan from Pennvest. We don't have an additional discussion until we find out whether or not the wells wells will be permitted as permanent wells by D E P. You cannot apply for Pennvest funding until you have a permit. So we don't yet have a permit for those wells, so we can't open a new discussion with Pennvest on funding for the wells.
But you can have this guy Pennvest and they can give you an idea.
We do have this.
And what?
Well, we don't do them, we don't do them at a public meeting.
No.
Right, but in the discussion, it would qualify, but the issue for whether or not you would qualify for grant funding has to do with the average residential customer rate, which is the cities right now has hundreds of dollars less than what that is to qualify. And there's a lot more than just the customer rate when considering the residential customer rate, when considering rate increases. Because you also have commercial rates, industrial rates. And those are not always equitable. They're not always the same. So that's part of a discussion in rate setting that has been going on by the subcommittee of council. And that's part of what led council to go to both Wayne and Castania to have a discussion about forming a joint municipal authority. Because right now, in order to qualify for that grant money, residents of this community would have to see the average at least two hundred dollars a year increase. That's substantial. So if there's a way to get things funded to charge people two hundred dollars extra to get grant money, how much grant? It's not a hundred percent.
No, I mean, the rate through Pennvest is substantially lower than we're going to repeat with Pennvest.
Right. And that five million dollars is a one point seven something for several years until it goes up, but it still won't go up to what we would borrow. So it's still significantly less than other ones, but but we will always go to Pennvest or like the wells. But the discussion on raising rates just arbitrarily, just so you hit that magic number so that you can somehow qualify for grants like down at the sewer plant, part of that did qualify. But again, that has to do with the average residential customer rate. And it's a lot for residents sometimes to carry that extra weight just to try to get something out of Keller, let's say, that would be grant valid. So there's a lot that goes into that discussion and the subcommittee has had those discussions. And just having those discussions, hopefully continuing with Castania and Wayne Township.
Yes.
Second question. So are are we as council under any time constraint to either do nothing, keep everything the way it is? Or to move forward with a joint authority if it's Wayne and Castania agree to become a part of it? We have everything in line to do that. Does it have to be in place by a certain date?
You have to make application no later than the twenty fourth of January to Pennvest. Or to P U C, sorry, for a rate change. That is a complete application. That isn't just notice, hey, we might apply. So you would really need to make a final decision in the month of September because we will have to have time to get actuaries, the auditors, accountants. Ralph Helles will have to update the rate study, which they'll have to do that so that it's able to be in an application to Pennvest and get a legal service in place.
And if memory serves, it would also be necessary for them to make an application to P U C to give customers sixty day notice to enter. It faces to. Mayor, I would suggest that, I mean, we've had a long discussion on this this evening. I suggest that we table this motion and have the subcommittee take under my, the, which is raised by the city authority between now and the next week.
Do you put in that a motion?
I have.
Have a motion or do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? I think we discussed pretty heavily, but we had something on.
And just real quick about the timeline. What happens if we were to ban the authority? What is, we found out September is our timeline.
If we're gonna have to apply for the P U C, correct?
So that means that we need to have another joint authority established by September. Is that correct?
So to be close enough that you would be all three pretty agreeable by the end of September, because that is the intention.
So if we were to table it, then that means there had, there'd probably be a committee meeting with our counterparts within the next two weeks to because there, yeah, because there is a timeline that we are.
Okay, so I have a motion for a second. Any further question? Call for the vote.
Councilor Byer.
Yes.
Councilor Constance.
No.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Braker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. Okay, so we'll move on. Now, is that, that makes speed move point on time, does it not?
It doesn't.
Oh, it doesn't? Okay. So then the C distribution is entering into agreement with P F M, appraisal or the water waste or utility.
Well.
You have plane further?
At the last meeting of council, council directed to get votes from M P's that can do that. One of the M P's happens to be the engineering firm for the filtration authority and suburban. And so obviously, there's a conflict there. The other was P F M Financial Advisors, which is a division of the financial advisors to work through the Pennsylvania municipal. Let's move to council.
I guess I'd like to know how much they are charging.
Um, I guess I'd like to know how much they are charging.
Seven, seven thousand five hundred dollars for water, seven thousand five hundred dollars for sewer. And to give you an impression on what that rate is, um, the point five seven eight that the city owns on Belmont Avenue, the city had to pay nearly five thousand dollars to have that phrase, it's a piece of bait and pro. So they are incredibly competitive prices for what will be involved.
You have a motion.
I'm going to be agreeable to your better.
Second, and a second. Questions, comments?
Well, I'm gonna be a nuisance on this too. I think we made a mistake when, when we called, uh, uh, for proposals to do this. There is, as Rich indicated, there is a statutory way in which water and wastewater systems are appraised to establish the fair market value. And that's a process in which buyer and seller both retain a utility valuation expert from a list that is provided by PUC. Uh, and those two appearances are average. So A to even suggest it, if we were to sell the water system, we would have to pay for an appraisal. It would not be this appraisal, and therefore we are paying twice. If we are not selling the water system, it's really a matter of academic interest as to what it's doing. So I think from that point of view, we should not do it. And having read the proposal from these people, I am not satisfied that what they would give us would be anything that's even worth having.
Yeah.
They list uh, three approaches to value, and they dismiss all of them. They will not do an analysis. They do an income analysis, except the system has no income. And they tell us that they would not find an adequate basis for, uh, an analysis of complete sales. So if they are going to reduce the number, they will reduce it from somewhere which is deprived of sunshine. So I do not believe that now that we've looked at, at what we need to do in the event of a sale, I don't believe there is any point in having an opinion of value, and I would have no faith in the opinion of value that these people would provide. So I would urge people to reject this proposal.
Any other comments, questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
No.
Councilmember Moore.
No.
Mayor Long.
Interesting argument, no. Um, seventy, consideration the award of skate park construction bid.
Uh, we opened construction bids on August first three, one bid was themed from skateboard super ground, the amount of seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Um, this day, it was the whole construction of the skateboard design, um, including the public title course with the um, pump down to this. Um, soon reviewed by the engineering project or any year, and we have certified the sound is included for you. Um, it is currently being reviewed by the council government for labor satisfaction fine. As of right now, I think we're pretty happy about the formal, go ahead from there, from them, yes. Um, so I just asked council to award this contract for construction. You can see more super grass LLC and the amount of seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, make that contingent on people, bigger will review by the council.
Got a motion, uh, a quick question. Um, I'm not sure how, how would, how the bids are open and all that stuff. And so it's August first. So we got this August fourth, so it's like three days, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know that there's not a lot of skateboard companies out there probably bidding on these things. Was there like notice like prior two weeks in March advance that, hey, this is gonna be up for bid? Or did it just accompany say, hey, I just happened to see the website and, or the, the vest companies and the projects that are out there?
No.
Is that, is that why it's such like a, like a three day window?
No, this is, we opened them August first.
Right.
It's been, uh,
Advertised.
Advertised for, I believe, two months now.
All right, that's.
We're all papers.
Yeah, that's, that's what I figured, just wanted to clarify that.
And this company is actually from Florida, we had a stretch from line.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion for, and a second, any further comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Byerlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yeah. Seventy, updated on rates of the quality of the bidding project.
This is a CPG funded project, uh, we just wanted to give notice to, um, the public, the council, that they brought heating, it started, it was on site today, that the company, um, crew, they were known to ADA ramp uh, this week, which is not interrupting traffic, but the week of the twenty-first, so just for now, they will start um, very unheating work, which will interrupt traffic. Uh, we are still waiting on the for sure date, um, when they will start, I'll, yeah, coming from another project. But once I've known, um, I will work to get that out in the people, we'll put on a Google page, on the Facebook page and everything, as well as, um, the further they check out how the buildings are ready, those that may be working, it must have been. And just to remind everyone, the heating project area is East Paul Eagle Street, um, from Mary Valley, near the, near the bridge, St. Chris, Main Street Bridge to North Anna Street and all the race street from East Main Street to East Paul Eagle Street.
Do you want to have any questions about them? Seventy, discussion of the twenty point three community development block grant funding.
So we have been moving through the community development block grant program. Uh, we've had one public hearing as well as solicitor for nonprofit applications from uh, nonprofits that have city residents. Um, we've compiled with city, city staff as well as the nonprofit application for projects for council consideration, um, that was in our, maybe the, the allocation of those funds. We have here, David Gill is here from the Family Service Association of North District PA. Uh, he has submitted for funding for PH two-on-one, um, and health plan services to respond for these in vulnerable, vulnerable communities and families within the city of Lock Haven. Uh, welcome David to say a little bit on the project and any same questions if I still have any, and I'll go through the other ones.
Hello, council members, uh, my name is David Gill and the community executive manager and community coordinator for the Family Services Association of North District of Pennsylvania. This is our largest program, PH two-on-one. We actually received the date two-on-one program where the, we created a program in the entire organization. We have, the program has around since nineteen seventy-two. So we are, we'll be in our fifty-second year, Family Services Association have been a part of that. It's in the fire. The PH one-one program is an information and referral service that is available to, uh, you say, call it, and get in touch with us via email text or to the online class. It is available twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It is always, uh, gonna cost free sort of. We have a stated, we certainly look most vulnerable communities, uh, families, uh, last year, we probably got overall close to a hundred thousand contacts, and that is over seventeen counties, including the open county, uh, certain, uh, the eventual number of one can four million. That's what I mean. And, uh, probably our biggest issues that people talk in about are have to do with, uh, good access to the, uh, brand, I mean, helping quoting the system. And probably the big, uh, issue that has been coming up is system mental health. We have a program within of line, of one line that is very much for, that is basically so that people have someone to talk to to get sort of the new forms that, that, not what they need. Uh, additional treatments that are needed or whatever, they're just going through a rough patch. But it is far away the area of the program that it, where it is, uh, increasing now and where we are seeing a lot of, uh, I would say trouble, not probably, uh, the one we got.
And just around that, uh, FSA is asking for fifteen thousand dollars over the course of three years, um, three years is the length of our contract with CPG, so it would be, um, we were just allocating that out per year, uh, coming from the city. Um, and this was for homeowners coming from the city of Lock Haven, so will be for, for residents as well. Um, I will, it is, is a, uh, a service that is talked about a lot, and now I feel like I'm bored and they supported, um, if they're funny. Well, that I know, especially hard. It's on it, so, and I, I need that it doesn't lead to a lack of.
And my question is, when you say fifteen thousand over three years, is that fifteen thousand in each of three years or fifteen thousand, five thousand dollars a year?
Yeah, five thousand dollars a year. I'm sorry.
Is that all we can do?
Um, we, we, I do think, um, the way I have it to ask presented with the application was for fifteen thousand, so that's why they not is in there. Um, the way I have the amounts broken down, uh, in the sheets in front of you, uh, distributing the money as we really have leading conference.
Well, they know that this, you know, your business, I mean, is a very, very valuable service for us. That's what they need, and that's why.
Um, is there, are any, any other questions on this, who want one application, I can explain the others.
One?
Have you, have you applied to the county united way here? And have you asked the county commissioners for some of their block grant? Or are we the only ones jury asking for a vote?
That the county is in process. I just had to give you from, um, Friday afternoon, with that being a question, I've been in contact with them, but this is designed back fully office, then probably going to be one of them.
The next project we have for consideration, um, were the public rent rooms, um, hopefully through parking lot. Um, it will sell all the gratitude in the parking lot, um, to ADA compliance, that are equal that is automatic, they need to care, etc. And they change, changing station. Um, this was, if you remember, was a grant application a while ago, um, with updated quotes. It would be, uh, it would be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, uh, but it's allocated now, um, it may be, uh, eligibility and fundability for the, for me. The next project would be putting money towards the Hannah Park improvement. This is thinking ahead a couple of years, um, but it does take some time. For fifteen thousand dollars. I think that thirty thousand dollars in the total. First, um, for, for Hannah Park, um, want to address ADA compliance, safety concern, and stormwater issues, basically overall, um, running of that part. And the third, fourth project would be funding towards the zoning ordinance and subdivision lane development ordinance. Um, so these are two substantial documents that were launched, I believe, in twenty eleven. Um, so I'll combine, and to combine this CPG funding with other grant funding, um, hopefully get a total project cost of around a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, in addition to that, these products were presented to the planning commission. Um, they put forward a ranking of, rank them one and four, just for your consideration, recommendation. Um, one would be a public restroom, two would be two-on-one, or two-on-one services, three would be Hannah Park, and four would be the zoning ordinance in subdivision lane. Uh, so what I just need from council right now is what you would like to put forward for final consideration at the final hearing on September eleventh. Um, as I mentioned, you can't have all four, there's no competition, there's no need for us to cut one out, um, but this makes me feel, I'm, we can ask for more if anyone wants to publicize this.
You're not looking for a vote, and so I just sent this to you.
Correct.
Is everyone okay with what's been said, and go ahead, questions?
Um, I got a lot of kids. A lot of kids, and my kids go to group view and play volleyball. There could be fifty, sixty to seventy kids that are playing volleyball on one court. Is there a way that we can take number six, Hannah Park, instead of having more pickleball courts?
Should have mentioned to you that drawing was preliminary just for the, just for allocation, had no bearing. We have a recovery out now, but we're gonna rebuild every market. I actually just went out.
That's not ridiculous, so we can still. Yeah, because, um, because, because when you go over there and talk to the kids, they want more volleyball courts. Because they, they literally are there and then they just rotate in and out, yeah, there are kids. If we get volleyball courts, I say, well, I think Hannah Park greatly increased there as you see, it's just because it seems like it's under you, how many kids are over review right now, just like, they have volleyball. I think that'd be, it's a great thing, and I know my kids keep on pushing that like that. Got it, give the big more courts, because we don't have any, right?
Yeah, the survey is open right now for Hannah Park input, so anybody who.
So I need to have my kids, right, send it to their.
And they're.
Any other questions, ever? Does everyone mean what was suggested here, we move forward? Give him the head lobs. Yeah. Uh, any other unfinished business, Greg?
I have none, your own.
New business, ADA, consideration of ordinance number twenty point three dash zero eight.
This is a repeal and update then, uh, replacement of the city sewer and sewer disposal ordinance section on industrial pretreatment. And September twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth, the city had an audit by EPA. And some of these suggestions grew out of suggestions EPA provided recommendation. They were put down on paper by city engineer Jim Ballyett from Gwyndopson Foreman at Peggy Hill, who is our attorney. who is our attorney through Blank Rome, that helps us with EPA discussion and with industrial pretreatment. So the result is the 62 pages, the version for you to
Okay, we're starting on page one.
I have a motion of the floor to approve evidence.
That.
And a second, any questions or comments?
Call for the vote.
There's a short, like, what does that entail? Look, like, exactly, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm just seeing your hand, didn't you want that? What, that, that, call for the vote. Can we give Jim the reader's side at first?
So the industrial pretreatment program predominantly applies to WFP surveys, which I can change their name again, Proda and April. And we already treat municipal weights throughout the system. And the industrial users are part of that component, so they have particular rules to apply.
You're making a change in the bigger company facing. Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Fireland.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson. Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. 8B, consideration of ordinance number 20.3-09.
This is an update to the vehicle and traffic chapter of the Lock Haven City Code. This provides for a blanket maximum speed limit of 25 miles per hour on all city streets unless they are specified in the subsection A, which many streets are. But what you'll see is that all the ones that used to be 25 miles an hour, they still are, they're just not listed individually anymore. And also it adds that the citywide speed limit for alleys is 15 miles per hour. It also removes the West Bald Eagle and South Jones flashing intersection light. And adds an area of parking prohibition because of the addition of the driveway on West Fourth Street.
Do I have a vote?
I'll move ordinance 20, 23 over.
Thank you.
I'll second. Motion for floor, and a second. Questions and comments?
You were trying to get my attention, right?
No. Well, if it's not specifically on here, then it's 25.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
I'll just make sure we covered everything, right?
And the lady that was here earlier, hers is on here.
Read your idea.
All right, call for the vote.
Councilmember Fireland.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yes.
Councilmember Missouri, yes. Councilmember Stevenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Breaker.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore. Mayor Long.
Yes. 8C, appointment of voting delegates to PML annual summit.
To the season for the annual leadership summit of the municipal league, October 5th to the 8th. Council needs to designate a voting delegate and an alternate voting delegate for service during the event.
We could, my, here. Rick.
Steve, that I, I would move that Steve be the delegate again, he actually sees most of the reservations prior to, well, prior to
A second.
We can, can we do it together?
We could, Rick, could we?
Oh, yes.
Have you drawn with me? I have drawn, yeah.
Run this tradition that you're voting, that you didn't give orders, we can do it all at once.
That sounds funny, but yes, I like that my motion to the extreme, uh, no one delegated myself, the alternate public delegate.
Okay, and we have a second. Also, that's a problem.
All right, call for the vote.
Councilmember Fireland.
Yes.
Councilmember Conklin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Missouri.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Breaker. Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. 8D, annual donation from Commonwealth University.
Commonwealth University Lock Haven gives the annual donation to the city, which they say is for annual emergency services. This year it's $2,116, last year it was 2,000, 2,716, last year it was $1 less. And that's the total donation to the city from Lock Haven University. And it's equal to one student enrolled in the fall semester at Lock Haven. Uh, $1 per student.
Yes. Was historically been for a long time. 8D, notice of retirement, Rhodes Law.
Rhodes Law, which is the legal service for the city's pension fund, is leaving that business, and so this heads up to council that we will need to look for another legal service firm for the city employees' retirement fund, and then the police.
Any other new business?
I have none, Your Honor.
And we have the FYI reports.
It's on the, the old phase one update, which I'll continue going. I will draw your attention to the 2023 first half budgeted actual report included in the council packet. This is put together by department. If there is a specific department you would like to see greater information of, please let me know. If you have any other questions, either from the public or council, my email address is available on the website, and you can reach me here at City Hall. Okay. Thank you.
Any else from
I have nothing here.
Anyone else have any, any requests? Yeah.
I want to thank you all, the members of the city authorities, our quarter attendants, my friend, Jack Neal is here. We, or Carrie DeGio, myself, Wade Williams, Twist, Adam, you know, and our advisors. And thank you for taking, and for speaking on that.
Thank you. Anyone else have any requests? Yes.
I want to say you guys were reconsidering, you know, taking taken out of the, we got feelings there.
Want to make sure we're doing the best, thank you. Anyone else have any requests?
Well, yes.
Go ahead. I was setting the timer. I'll pick it up.
That was my dirty look. I saw it. And I don't know like how to phrase this. I think I'd like to ask to extend the terms of reference of our architect that we voted on last time. If you recall, he's currently working on a $6,000 new, uh, 6,000 square foot new building, which is 25% smaller than what our feasibility study said this department will need. And it's a lot more expensive than the accounting spent on buying and remodeling a 32,000 square foot building. And I believe that there are properties currently available on the market in Lock Haven that would meet both the need, the space needs of the police department and the residual administrative functions. And I'd like to reverse to reserve some time for our architect's neighbors to put in some proposals that he might consider as an alternative to this extremely expensive new construction.
Well, we took a vote on that. And I believe that I voted no. And if you, you went to
I directly voted yes.
Oh, you did, okay. My, my apologies, that you you can bring it on.
I mean, I don't have a motion to vote you, but it just irks me that there is stuff out there that we could, that we could use to convert possibly. And we should not ignore that opportunity. With that,
you have any properties in mind?
I do. Not the appropriate to put them in this meeting.
If you would be so kind as to email me what those are, I can email them to the architect to see see what he would respond with a cost price reviews.
Anyone else have any requests? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You did.
For adjourn, thank you.